To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. The first item on the agenda is public comment. Before we start public comment, I do want to make a statement about the Larkin Road Project. I had indicated that I was gonna try to put this on the agenda for this meeting, but we could not get all pertinent parties to attend, you know, vacations and summer schedules being what they are. So we have confirmed the 28th that all pertinent parties can attend, and those people are the developer, the developers engineer, the town planner, the conservation agent, the DPW director, all public safety officers, and town council. So it is my hope to keep that to a short agenda so that we can address all the concerns that have been sent to us to date and any others that come up. The 28th, September 28th, that meeting. It's our second. We meet on the 2nd and 4th Tuesday of the month, that's the 4th.
Go back from our summer schedule.
Yeah. Okay. Now, we're gonna receive oral communications from members of the public. Members of the public may address the select board for up to three minutes, longer with the permission of the chairperson. The select board will not engage in discussion on topics raised during public comment, but may choose to add the topic to a future agenda. This agenda segment will be limited to 15 minutes unless extended at the discretion of the chair. Do we have any public comment tonight? Come on up. Thank you. If you could just state your name and your address.
Yes. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Jim Stewart, and I reside at 22 Old Point Road. I know that my neighbor Dick Hibbert of 3516th T wanted to be here with me tonight to share his concerns about the ongoing planning process for the 12th Street Emergency Access Road. Unfortunately, Mr. Hibbert is not feeling well, and he's unable to attend in person, so he was going to try and call in or send an email to the board today. Regardless of that, while the individual impacts to us of the current design are different, we share common concerns about the process we are observing. Our shared concern is that a design is being put forth, much of which is based on the opinion of Tom Hughes, on how our Conservation Commission will view any intrusion into the quote-unquote "wetland" adjacent to 12th Street. And as far as we know, this is not necessarily the official position of the commission. And furthermore, that the commission may be asked to rule only on the plan as presented from an environmental perspective, and as a community, we may never know their tolerance for an alternative that may actually result in a straighter, safer, faster, and more effective road in the event of an emergency that may, in fact, be under extremely dangerous and difficult driving conditions. While the quote-unquote "wetland" may not be the only consideration at hand, and we acknowledge that, it has been put forth as a significant reason for the current design by Mr. Hughes during his presentation to the select board and neighbors during the March Sightwalk. To that end, we would request that this board proactively engage the Conservation Commission for their guidance on their tolerance for straighter alternatives that could well result in a transparent dialogue about alternatives that may or may not be acceptable, and then air the debate about all the pros and cons of straightness, safety, throughput, cost, fill, the ever-growing size of emergency vehicles, flexibility for potential future modification needs, and the mitigation of the need to take private property in the process now and in the future, and also that this board address the prevailing feeling that Newburyport should be engaged on funding for the benefit accruing to their citizens in an emergency. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you.
I have a bunch of copies if anyone's interested.
Could you send that in electronically?
Can I have a written copy? Do you have it?
Yeah.
Like I said.
Pass them on down.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Oh.
Any other comments from the public? Going once? Okay. Next.
Based upon what Mr. Stewart said, I'd move to have this Plum Island Escape Route 12, you know, put on the next board agenda and have a representative from the Conservation Commission who can knowingly come before us and discuss the wetland issues at this location. And the reason I say knowingly, I know that the Conservation Commission agent has just been hired, so I wouldn't fault her if she wasn't aware, so we should have somebody from the Conservation Commission who can address that issue because it is a live issue.
Is that a motion?
It is a motion.
I'll suckle that motion.
So we have a motion and a second. Now we have discussion.
Can I have one, just say one thing? I spoke to three city councilors in the last month, and none of them knew about this road, and two of them are running for mayor. I just don't, I just don't understand how two people running for mayor in Newburyport doesn't know there's an access road being built that's gonna help their city more than helps Newbury.
How is it gonna help Newburyport more than it helps Newbury?
Because if you look at the shape of the island, the northern end is all Newburyport, and this, the people coming up, we're avoiding, okay? So the northern end is gonna help. It's all Newburyport. So I just don't understand why Newburyport...
It helps Newbury as well.
I know, but I'm just saying.
This isn't an agenda item right now, so it's not on the agenda, so I really don't want to...
It was up for discussion.
No, her motion is up for discussion.
Right, so this is part of the motion.
No, it's not.
Oh, I disagree with you.
So the motion, can you read the motion, Julie, please?
Back. Jerry asked to have the Emergency Access, 12th Street Emergency Access Road placed on the next agenda, including the front, um, agent.
Or a representative, from a knowledgeable representative, because I don't want to sandbag the new person if they're not aware of what's been going on, and I think it would be unfair to Ms. Hope, since she's only been there for a month, to require her to be here if she doesn't know.
Well... If, yep. To be honest with you, those type of wetlands are becoming very important on the island, and we've heard a lot of different things, and Mr. Stewart's outside and listening, but if they can meet and if they can have a representative come before us and they don't mind doing that...
Who's they?
Meaning Concom? That's what you're asking?
Yeah, right.
I don't, let's get it out, let it fly.
See, my concern is that this is a purview that belongs to the Conservation Commission.
Well, that's gonna be their choice. They might not come.
Then it's not our purview, so even if they come, to what end? Like, what's the point? What's the end result?
We were down there.
The end result is they're talking about doing a...
So Jerry, are you looking for further...
Let me, if I may, please. You're talking about doing a property swap with Mr. Tibbet, and that's gonna come before us, so I just wish to be knowledgeable because he stands to lose a lot of his property, and I wanna be able to be knowledgeable when, you know, they say, "Why did we do it this way?"
How do you, how did you decide or determine that he was gonna lose a lot of his property?
Because that's what I have been told by the neighbors down there.
Did Mr. Hubbard tell you that?
No, he didn't.
I think, I think, I think what we're getting asked, though, and it makes sense to me a little, too, we're getting asked how much impact we can have to maybe straighten the road out a little and take a little bit more of that wetland, and the Concom's either gonna say no or yes. But I mean, who does, who owns the wetland? Does anyone know? No?
This really isn't on our agenda, and I really don't wanna get into this tonight. Mr. Hubbard's not here.
I'm trying to guarantee that you have a date certain. That's all I'm trying to do, and the necessary people to come and educate us and educate Mr. Stewart and Mr. Hubbard.
Okay, I understand your point. I understand your point.
Okay.
I'm not comfortable putting it to a date certain, not just what happened after this Larkin Road project. I mean, I thought for sure that everybody was gonna be able to make it, but they can't. So I need to confirm that when I do put it on an agenda, and it will be on an agenda again, that all parties will attend.
Okay, well, why don't we put it on for the same day as the Larkin Road? That's well over a month.
Well, you know what? We have another meeting before that. Let me see if I can get my ducks in a row, and then if that happens, we can have this, you know, move this again then.
Well, there's been a motion, it's been seconded, so let's have a vote.
Let's vote. All in favor?
Read the motion again, please, Julie.
The motion was to have the 12th Street Emergency Access conversation, including an knowledgeable representative of Concom, and placed on the next agenda.
But it also, to me, was, and Jerry, correct me if I'm wrong, to see what their tolerance was for straightening the road. It's not a whole conversation on the whole of the road itself.
Well, I mean...
'Cause I'm not up for that either.
The crux of it is, they're saying it has to go this way because of the wetland.
Right.
So what I'm saying is that we don't have all the parties here to have this discussion tonight, and I don't know if we can have all the parties here to have the discussion at the next meeting, but hopefully at the next meeting, I can line the ducks up in a row and get all parties involved, and we can get them back in the room.
Or we could even ask for a, you know, something from the Concom.
We can do something, but it's not on our agenda tonight. I don't wanna have this conversation tonight. So we had a motion, we had a discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Me? The three, the three have it. Okay. So we'll add it to the next agenda, Julie.
And that will be, all right, in two weeks from now.
Yeah.
September 14th, it will be on the agenda.
Providing everybody can be here.
Yeah, if everybody can, well, yeah, providing everybody can be here. I don't wanna have, just so you understand, Mr. Stewart, I don't wanna have a conversation, and I won't put it on the agenda if not all parties can be here to answer to it, because it'll just extend it and extend it, and it's just, it's not good for anyone.
We just want Concom to weigh in and give us guidance.
They should be doing that at their meeting, though.
The problem is, they might potentially just say, "We've been presented with an NOI with a plan, and we're just gonna say if it's environmentally okay or not," without getting into hypotheticals about where something could go and their tolerance for doing that. And so then we may never know if they would say, "Hey, listen, you have options here. You could straighten this thing a little bit, take a little bit more, and actually come up with the end of a better road."
Probably not gonna fill the wetland, but we'll find out when we...
I don't think we have to fill it. I think there's compromises that could be made.
The area of question on the island, it's called the Blowout, and it's unique, and it is significant, and we will have our experts here to explain why.
Yep.
And Mike, as far as Newburyport goes...
Yep.
We don't need Newburyport's permission to do work.
Well, no, I'm not asking for Newburyport's permission.
So what are you asking?
I'm asking for financial.
So we want, we want, what finances are we gonna ask them for?
How much does it cost?
Why are we bearing this, this low cost?
Well, because it resides in the town of Newbury.
Yes, but it's helping over 300 Newburyport people who will use it when they have to escape the island on the next hurricane once it's built.
All three city councilors told me they were shocked they knew nothing about it.
Well, they should be paying attention to town of Newbury politics.
Maybe, maybe they should, but it's all on their, it's all on their table now, so they're all over it.
Are you speaking to, I'm a little bit concerned that you're speaking on behalf of the board to another...
I'm not speaking bad with the board. I have discussions with people in the town of Newburyport because I'm a selectman in the town of Newbury.
But you don't represent the board.
I don't represent the board.
Thank you.
Look at that, you waited a long time ago.
Next, next on the agenda, we have the report of the chairwoman.
Just to get it out of the way, and Mike, and this is not anything to add to this 'cause we're not supposed, but when we're doing something like this that is between a lot of different houses in Newbury and affects some Newbury people, it's probably best to have it done with Newbury funds rather than having other people have some control over the road, too. So, all right.
It's a difference of opinion.
So, report of the chairwoman. I have signed the VW 2205 North of Boston. I've signed the PR 2202 for Julie O'Brien, the PR 2203 for Julie O'Brien, and PR 2203 for the select board. Grants, gifts, and donations, none. Public hearings, none. New business. We have a business license for Colby Jackman, DBA Outdoor Dog Training and Trails, 48 Low Street. It's gonna be the office. It's gonna be a dog training at client sites on public trails. No onsite boarding or daycare, and that's per the zoning enforcement officer.
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion. Jerry?
Yes, I'm just, I don't understand what it means to have dog training on client sites and on public trails. Are they training the dogs in the streets, or is this another way of saying they're gonna be walking dogs on the public?
It's my understanding she's gonna have a dog training business. Her office is gonna be at Low Street in her home, probably, and she's going to drive to the customer's home and pick up the dog and train it at the customer's house and on public trails.
And what is, and on public trails?
Yeah, like the Clipper City Rail Trail?
Okay.
Like that kind of...
Hi, Colby. Hi. Nice to meet you.
Colby, come on up.
Thank you for being here to answer my question.
Yeah, so I pretty much, I take dogs, I do train them at their house, I teach the owners how to handle their dogs, and I also take them to places like Cashman Park in Newburyport. I take them to like Home Depot, just training them to exist with their people and enjoy their families.
So the public trails, it's how to like walk on the public trails?
Yes, off-leash training, and I even trained a couple of dogs how to kayak this year, which was really...
Thank you for being here.
Thanks.
Any other questions for Ms. Jackman? Okay, all in, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, guys.
Welcome.
Good luck, Colby. Thank you for coming. Okay, we have a business license for Ralph Johnson, junior president, doing businesses for Lowell Incorporated, Lands End Boat Restoration.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We have a business license for Elise Gay, DBA Boston Born Inc., 65 Newburyport Turnpike, tattooing and body art.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
I'm here, by the way, if anybody has any questions. Hi.
Do you wanna come up and give us a little something about your business?
Yeah, I actually brought business cards as well.
So it's a new business to our town? No?
Yes.
Tell us a little bit about it.
Um, so, great. I've always wanted to be famous.
Let's say this, we hope you're right, too.
So I've been a tattoo artist for five years. I learned to tattoo from another female artist in Washington State. I've also worked in Atlanta and New Hampshire, and it was just kinda time to spread my wings and go out on my own. I was made aware that I will be the first ever tattoo shop in Newbury.
Yes, you are.
And also being female-owned, I thought that was pretty cool. So, I mean, I know tattooing is still kind of one of those kinda taboo kinda things that people are still kinda like, "Are you a criminal?" Like, "I'm gonna jail time," but I have a master's degree, so I'm like really smart, too, but, um, but yeah, I'm just like really excited to have my own business, and again, being female-owned is just, I think that's just super cool.
I wish you the best of luck. The only thing I don't know is, does the board of health have to come? Have you...
I talked to her, yeah. She gave me approval and everything like that, so, yeah, she was really excited. She's like, "I'm gonna have to come get tattooed now."
All right.
Good luck.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good night.
Good luck.
I think more people have tattoos now that are young than, than do not.
And then anybody wants one can come up and get one. We'll put them down the end over there. Okay, we have a used car dealer's license, class two, Plum Island Classic Cars LLC, Michelle Simeone, 131 Newburyport Turnpike, buy and sell secondhand vehicles.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
One-day liquor license, David Crowley, Celebration of Life at Spencer P.S. Little Farm. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. I have a one-day liquor license for Woodland Catering for a wedding at Spencer P.S. Little Farm.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I have a one-day liquor license for North Shore Bartending Services, 70th Birthday Celebration at Peter Hall.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I have an entertainment license, the show, entertainment show amusement license for the Sunset Club in Plum Island. I did want to mention something on that. I just want the public to be aware that the hours that they're asking for their entertainment is between 12 noon and 6 p.m., and it's gonna be loud music, so it won't be all hours of the evening, and I believe we have somebody here to speak to it.
Hi, good evening. Matt Porter, I'm the attorney for Sunset Club LLC, along with me is Josh Childs.
Hi.
Hey, I'm Josh, one of the owners of Sunset Club. So I did wanna clarify a couple of things, just because the, the application itself is a little, there's not a whole lot of information you can pump into the one-page application. So just to clarify, so there's three items they'd be looking to cover under the entertainment license. The first is their speakers, so the pumped-in music that plays off of, I believe, an iPad or a phone.
Exactly.
With that, there's three speakers indoor, there's four speakers outdoors. There are also televisions. There was some confusion as to whether those were covered. I know Julie was gonna touch on that, but just to cover all of our bases, there are four televisions that are inside. There are three, actually, they're all inside, all the televisions, so no televisions outside. They would be looking for, as far as those items are concerned, noon to 10 p.m. 10 p.m. is last call on those items. And then in addition to that, there would be live music. The live music, they would be looking for noon to 9 p.m., and that would be Monday through Sunday, so the live music would wrap up a little bit earlier than, than last call.
Nine or six, 'cause this says six.
Yeah, so it should be 9 p.m. on this, yep.
Is that consistent with what the other surrounding?
I think the beach coma goes till nine.
Music till nine or six?
I think it's nine.
Seven.
Is it seven?
I think nine's kinda late.
Okay, it's like...
But I need confirmation on that.
Yeah, so I think we would be looking to do whatever, you know, is permissible by the town and be on the same level as any of the other establishments.
I think we need to have to keep it equal.
If you had set limits on the other establishments, then obviously we would be fine with just adhering to that.
I don't believe you need a license for the TVs...
Okay.
...or to play music in, you know, like pipe in music.
Yeah.
As long as it's not like, the whole sole reason people are coming is to listen to that music, like, you know what I mean?
Right, right, right.
An entertainment license.
Sure.
Football games, background music, you know, the TVs are all gonna be inside, and I think even if you put a TV outside, that would be okay. Excuse me, I hear, see, the chief of police is up there?
Oh, yeah. Welcome to Newbury. You did a great job, it looks fantastic.
Oh, thank you so much.
The only thing I would suggest is if you could provide us with contact information in case we happen to get calls, we much prefer to call you folks or have a number to call and say, "Hey, you know, can you turn this down if there's an issue?" 'Cause no one wants to see the police showing up at their establishment, you know, for something like that. We don't wanna put a damper on your operation. So the first attempt, we always like to have, "Hey, you know, we just, can you kinda help a little bit?" And usually it's taken care of, so I would suggest you just, you know, stop by the station. We have a business, all the information for your business that we keep on file, so we can just make a phone call.
So do you have to stop by tomorrow or something?
Yep, yep, absolutely. Just tell the dispatcher you're there for it, and we'll set it.
Chris, thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am.
So I've asked her to see if she can dig up what the other two establishments have for licenses, but I have a feeling it either goes to six, who said seven? Somebody in the audience...
I thought it was seven.
Each coma is four to seven.
Four to seven?
Sundays. Just Sundays?
I think there are different hours for Sunday, I believe, my recollection is, it is seven o'clock.
Yeah, 'cause I think Georgie, Georgie Porgy, he has entertainment, too.
We'll put it up.
Meaning it's later on the other days, or...
I don't think that each coma has live entertainment on any...
Yeah, well, I don't know how long they go at all.
Mind if I, if I put this aside?
Sure.
And come back to this?
Yep, that's fine.
Thank you. So I'm gonna put this aside for now. Okay, so next on the agenda is the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission. I don't know if we should wait for Julie now for the minutes?
I would.
Okay. We have Merrimack Valley Planning Commission requests to reelect or select MV MPO Subregion Two representative. It's been recommended, well, Bob Snow is currently serving in that role. Rowley Selectman Robert Snow is currently the representative for MPO Subregion, and I believe he wishes to continue in that road. We also have a note from the town planner. Her recommendation is that Bob Snow continue to serve as the MPO representative for Subregion Two, which consists of Newbury, West Newbury, and Rowley. So I'll entertain a motion to appoint Bob Snow.
I had a nice discussion with Mr. Snow about this.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion, Mike?
I just say, Bob reached out to me and wanted to know if there was any interest in our board, and I said, I didn't personally, but I said, I thought he did a great job, and I said he would have my support. So, that's all.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next is appointments, review, approve and sign. We have some police appointments, and actually, there's an extra one that came in. Appointment of, let's start with the beginning. Jason Kuhna in the role of police sergeant, can I get a motion?
Motion.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? This, these appointments are, we had Mr. Ruthier retired from the police station, so because, from the police department, so because he retired, we need to move people up and backfill, and so there's going to be, Jason Kahuna is gonna fill the role of police sergeant. All in favor?
Any more discussion?
Yes.
Since we have the police chief here, I do have some, some questions. Chief, can you tell me how many present officers, how many people we have as a police...
Total, we have 22 personnel in the department. That's not counting the animal control or harbor masters, but...
Okay. And how many of them are women?
We have one deputy chief, she's a female, and we have, right now, we have two emergency communications officers.
And so they're dispatch, okay. So you don't have any patrolmen?
Not yet, no.
And how many...
Sign up?
Pardon me?
Wanna sign up?
No, thank you. And how many, how many of the 22 minorities are black?
None.
How many of the 22 are Hispanic?
None.
How many are Asian?
At this point, we, none. We have no applicant of those.
Okay. And, and I assume that the, the five who you're asking to promote or hire, they're, they're, they're not minorities, they're not black, they're not women, they're not Hispanics, they're not Asian?
The ones on this list?
Yeah.
They are not.
Three of them are veterans of our police force.
Okay, right. So they're basically, I guess, they're four white, five white meals?
Those are the only applicants we have, yes.
So is there any kind of plan to, you know, do some affirmative diversity?
Yes, we plan to look at anybody that applies to our department in an equal fashion, put them through the same process, and hopefully we'll get applicants. I'd love to.
Okay. I mean, well, is there any plan to, you know, positively find them? I mean, because, I mean, we, I think the country has been.
We advertise as an equal opportunity employer. Anybody that wants to join our department, we encourage very strongly.
Okay, all right. Well, I, I really do hope you do.
Of course.
Yeah, I mean, because the country has been through an awful lot, and I, I hope we've learned from, you know, the death of.
I will entertain any denomination, any sexual preference, any race, and I don't, I look for qualified people for our department. I understand the spirit of what you're saying. If you knew me, you wouldn't have to ask those questions. But, do you have any further questions?
No, I don't. I just, I just hope in the future, you really, you know.
I hope in the future, applicants, diverse applicants would like to join our department, they'd be welcomed.
Right.
As, again, if you knew me, you would not, you wouldn't even have this dialogue.
Well, no, I mean, you need this dialogue so people know.
If you knew me, you would realize you don't need this dialogue. But anyway, is there any other questions?
Well, the people who are listening out there, if they are able to listen, they should know that we're encouraging this, because, you know, diversity is a good thing.
Of course it is.
Thank you.
And I do know you have a, a woman as your right hand.
Absolutely, she's phenomenal.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Yeah, just one thing, and we don't want to discount dispatchers as just dispatchers, because a lot of officers start out on dispatch. And if we have two female dispatchers, I think that's a positive thing and a positive sign.
Probably one of the more responsible positions in that department, in the undersung, they are the front line, and they do a phenomenal job.
Nothing works unless you have dispatch.
I'm kidding, go to the wrong place once.
Okay, so all in favor of Jason Takuna as police sergeant?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No. Okay, John Baker, full-time patrolman.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Nathan Hunter for a full-time patrolman.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Theodore Dillon, a reserve patrolman.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And there's one more here, there was one more that came out, it should be, was on your desk, was actually Jay Ruthier is going to come back as a position of special police officer, in case we need him.
Before we vote, I just want to say personally, I've worked with Sergeant Ruthier so many years, thirty-two years he's devoted himself to this town. I want to publicly thank him for his service, congratulate him on his retirement. It is a void in our department that he has reached the retirement age, and I can't tell you how ecstatic I am that he wants to stay on in a capacity, at least some, giving us, you know, some continuity, some contact.
Support when needed.
He's a great, great, very experienced, and we're very lucky to keep him. I hope you, you vote him in.
Thank you.
Yes.
I was a little confused, so.
Yes.
Actually, because we just got this this afternoon.
I expected questions.
It's the, it's the same person, he's retiring, but he's going to stay on as a special police officer.
Yes.
And, and special police officer means he's what, on call, he's like?
Nope, he, most of it, what he'll be doing is he's available now for doing private details and traffic controls, or if, you know, if we want to bring him in for other town, if there's a town emergency, he can come in. And he also has experience and wants to stay involved in the Seabrook EMA response team. He was pretty much heading that up, and so it's, if he left that, it would be an incredible void as well. Very, very lucky, very lucky.
Chief, thank you for your time today, when I called you.
What's that?
Thank you for your time today.
Thank you for calling me, thank you for asking those questions.
But it's like, it's good to get some background like that out of the way, thank you.
Yep, yep, no, I really, as I told you, I really appreciate the phone call.
Let's move the vote here.
Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We were discussing. I was, I had a motion to.
I moved to appoint Theodore Dillon to reserve patrol.
No, 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 we did.
No, no, Jay Ruthier is a position of special.
Jay Ruthier was special police officer.
Ah, please, my bad.
Sorry, I thought we had a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Then do we have a second?
Second.
We had discussion. Now, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ron.
Okay, we have to have Susan Grillo, the Council on Aging, just going to pull a one-year position from eight twenty-four, twenty twenty-one through six thirty, twenty twenty-two. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Um, is, is this going to be the sixth person on the board for the Council of Aging?
I think so.
I guess, I guess I have a concern about that. How do you break a three-three vote? I don't think.
The Rec Committee does that too.
I don't know that that is good governance, to have an even number of directors.
I make a motion to put Evelyn Oyster back on.
I would second that motion.
I think that's a great idea. So I make a motion to put Evelyn Oyster back on.
No, we're still, we're still looking at Council on Aging, hold on.
She was former Council of Aging, and I would second your motion, Mr. Doyle.
Thank you.
So we have one, two, three.
I think we can have nine.
Four, five, we have one, two, three.
Last I check, we could have nine.
I think we can have nine members.
Right.
We have Jerry Dorr, Damon Jasperson, Joyce Macheros, Will, Bill DeMayo, Chuck, and Bear.
So she would be number six. So I, 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 I think it's unwa, it's not good governance to have an even number, because you can't break a tie then.
So I made a motion.
Robert's rules provides for that. I believe the chair is the tiebreaker in the event.
So I made a motion.
However, I don't believe the town has accepted Robert's rules of order.
Yeah.
So we just, town meeting, town.
Is anyone, I made a motion second, can we?
So if this committee can go to nine. Well, let's just.
We're getting in the weeds.
Yeah, we're getting in the weeds.
Can I make a?
Well, that's what we should be getting into.
Right, that's what our job is.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second for Joyce Grillo.
Susan, yep.
Joyce Grillo.
Susan Grillo.
All in, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
I made a motion.
Which was seconded.
And I'd like to vote on that motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye.
So you're opposing Evelyn Oyster?
Yep.
Okay, it's good to know.
Are you not voting, Mr. Walker?
I'm not voting.
So it's a two-two tie.
Okay.
So what happens?
She's on.
The motion didn't pass.
I mean, that's just, there's, there's no application, it's just came out of the blue.
Know why? It came out of the blue that you got rid of her.
It's just.
She's got, she's given thirty years to this town.
I know, and it's just.
She's given thirty years to this town, Jeff Walker.
Next, we're going to have a discussion on the Vietnam Moving Wall.
Wow.
I'm going to ask Chief Lucy to come up.
Excuse me, a point of order, I do believe if it's even, that the motion passes.
Yes, it does.
So she's back on the.
She's back on the committee.
I.
You don't want her on, Delicia, that tough lock.
I just think that's, I mean, I'll then call for vote again, I'll vote against, and you can bring it up at another meeting.
But we already had a vote.
So we've, we've.
Make their own rules.
Majority, majority vote, you can't have two, a tie. You don't have a majority.
Well, it's an even vote.
Yeah, it's not a majority.
It's an even vote.
You don't need a majority when it's an even.
Oh, no, you don't.
By Robert's rules, Mr. Colby just cited that we follow Robert's rules.
You corrected me and said that the town never adopted it.
Well, you corrected me and said they did.
So let's, let's stick to one thing, folks. Know something? Let's just talk about Mrs. Oyster. Mrs. Oyster has given so much town.
I, I totally.
It's my vote, I have the floor right now.
Okay.
Mrs., Mrs. Oyster's given so much to this town, and I don't know what the three of you have against her, but taking her off this committee was a sin.
Nobody has anything against her.
Well, why did you take her off the committee then?
I wanted to move the committee in a different direction.
What, put Chuck Bear and David Jasperson on? Put two old slutmen on?
Mike, Mike, let's just move on. We have the Vietnam Moving Wall discussion.
That's right, you don't want to talk about the weeds.
Chief Lucy, can you please come up and give a little description on the Vietnam Moving Wall? First of all, I want to say I am honored and humbled that Newbury has been chosen to, to display this part of history that I hope we never forget. Thank you, chief.
Well, what I'll do is I'll just introduce the gentlemen that have spearheaded this and approached me. Dennis Palazzo and Jason LaFroy have been in the committee to make this, this honor happen. My part in it has just been facilitating the venue, helping them get, you know, get things logistically set up to, to present this to the town and the community. But all the, all the yeoman's work was Mr. Palazzo, and I'd just like to introduce you to the board, and if you want to give them your.
So I'd like to thank the town of Newbury and the select board for being so welcoming and, and accommodating, because it was a long haul. And we, I moved the wall five times, five different venues, and other communities aren't like this. And I'll just leave it to that.
Thank God.
So the moving wall, does anybody not know what the moving wall is? Does anybody not know what the moving wall is?
I'm going to say I don't, so I can.
Okay, so it's a half-scale replica of the Vietnam Memorial in Washington, DC. Travels the country, stays a week at each location, been traveling for thirty years. Originally was conceived to help the people on the West Coast who didn't have an opportunity to visit Washington, DC to experience that solemn emotion. I've been trying to do this for about ten years. Because of COVID, they had some holes in their schedule, and I was able to reserve Labor Day weekend. And as I said, I had many obstacles with permitting in other communities. But Newbury was very welcoming, and thank you so much for that. We decided on the, the chief and I have been meeting weekly, and we decided on the Plum Island Airport as a, as a great venue. It's, it's plenty of space, plenty of parking, it's contained, we can, we can monitor it, we could, traffic control is, is, is pretty much under control. So the timeline, any questions, by the way, so far? No. So the timeline, the moving wall will be escorted in from Amesbury, where the drivers are staying, by Nemlec and the Patriot Riders at about nine thirty a.m. on Thursday, September second, and arrive at the site between nine thirty and ten. It'll be erected at that time and open to the public at one, opening ceremonies at six. There'll be a wreath laying, there'll be a welcome home ceremony, and a flyover at seven. It'll be open to, because it's a memorial, it's open to the public twenty-four hours a day, through the weekend until September seventh at six a.m., when it comes down and goes to New Jersey. Yes?
Who's doing the flyover?
State police.
Thank you. I just wanted to, we got a letter from the veterans, Kevin Hunt, the veterans, I think, not the veterans agent.
He's at VSO for Newbury Board.
VSO for Newbury Board, but he's looking for, you guys are looking for volunteers? Have you had your volunteer slot filled yet?
So, we don't, so I estimate we need about a hundred and sixty-eight volunteers to fill the hundred and thirty-plus hours that the wall is open. We have about ninety right now in various positions. The card that you see before you on the table is a postscout that was mailed out to two thousand veterans with the help of Kevin Hunt and Karen Tyler. And my number is on the bottom, as well as Paul Cote. Paul Cote is my volunteer coordinator, and everything's going through him for volunteers. And if anybody would like to volunteer, please feel free to call Paul Cote, we really need your help.
Like I said, you sort of, this today, you get, you get at least twenty hours from me.
Thank you.
By the way, all this information will be found on the Yankee Homecoming website. We have, Yankee Homecoming is a host, so yakyhomecoming.com, so I'll be looking up emails and stuff.
So you can reach Paul Cote?
Cote.
Cote at nine seven eight, five zero four, one zero zero six. Please, please leave a message. He can also be reached via email at C.L.A.I.M.S.C.O.T.E. at AOL dot com.
So just to put this in perspective, Jason is my logistics coordinator, and we have to, there's certain things we have to do for the wall upcoming. We have to build a two hundred and fifty-three foot wooden platform that the wall sits on. We got Lowe's to donate the lumber for that. We've raised about twenty thousand dollars for this. We've raised about eleven thousand dollars in donations of one kind or another. Home Depot is donating the landscaping and the lighting. We have various, every restaurants that are donating a meal for our volunteers, because we're going to feed the volunteers. Plum Island Airport helped us out a lot with the venue, so there's, there's a lot to this and a lot. And I'm really proud of my team, because they pulled this together in six weeks. So I, I formed the committee six weeks ago, we met exactly five times, and I'm so proud of the progress that they made. Because other communities tell me that they, they worked on this for a year.
Is there anything we need to know, chief?
Yes, I was going to say, aside from that, the logistics, or what the town can expect on impacts, I mean, it's a Labor Day weekend, so we, depending on weather, you know, we expect that there'll be beach traffic as well as the monument traffic. I've done a lot of research with peers and other jurisdictions that have hosted. I actually talked to Sheriff Nixon from Williams, Arizona, who was, you know, one of the, the hosts, and I got a lot of information in logistics from him. But I actually talked to Chief Dwyer from Nahat, who just a few weeks ago hosted it, and that's very, very compatible to what we can expect. And what we can expect is anywhere, at any given time, seventy-five to a hundred and twenty-five cars will be on site at the, you know, viewing or attending the memorial. The whole spread of time, we can anticipate five thousand to seven thousand visitors, in that range is what we're expecting. But what's, what's, takes, you know, some of the concern out is, that's always moving. That's the, that's the total amount of attendees, but there's no event where they're hanging, or they're there, they pay their respects, they, you know, they look for the name that they're looking for, they, you know, they, they, they pay homage and then they leave. So it's very transient, you know, the attendees. The way that it's being facilitated at the site, the Plum Island Airport was good enough to authorize the closing of the Turmack Runway, the hardtop, and it's going to be on that end, so it gets away from that curve that I was concerned about for the traffic, you're slowing to enter and people exiting. It's on the other side of it, very manageable. The entrance will be on the Newbury Port side, the exit will be, there's a, there's a gate very, you know, much further down east on the, on the turnpike. So I, I'm very comfortable with any traffic concerns. Plenty of parking, and the layout that Jason has come up with on the logistics is very, very well done. You know, we, I've walked it, and we've chalked it, and it, it looks good.
So we have approximately two hundred and seventy parking spaces, I'm sorry.
I'm not raising my hand.
Oh. Too late, sorry.
Do you have?
This doesn't require an approval of the board?
Nope.
This is just a meet and greet, right?
Yes.
So I wanted to address any concerns that the board may have, and answer any questions that the board may have prior to the event, and we're ten days out right now.
I, I know you've asked me to give a speech, and I'm, I'm honored to do so.
Thank you.
Oh, you're more than welcome. What, who else is going to be speaking?
We're expecting Lenny Merritt, Laura Healy, James Kelkhorst, and I mean, Bruce Tar has responded.
Bruce Tar hasn't responded yet, but we expect.
I expect him to, great.
And then you guys all got your invites.
Thank you.
Sounds good to me.
And can I introduce our resident Veterans Grave Officer, and Constable, Mr. Bill DeMayo?
Nice to meet you. My pleasure.
He's also a Vietnam veteran.
Ah, you're a hero.
And.
Thank you for your service. Welcome on.
If anybody can trust it, I do ask why.
Yeah. Leave him up, Jason with Tracy, and somebody can grab him. So I'm looking forward to the event.
Me too. Hope, hope to see you all there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, okay, great.
I, 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 I've got like five places for those. Good man, okay.
Okay, so next is a discussion regarding filming the town in committee board meetings.[1754.74] So back in, I think, 2017. Yeah, back in 2017, the select, the then-select board voted a policy to film public meetings. We hear the second, first line of the second paragraph, "Further and effective immediately, all board and committee meetings shall be recorded." We had an incident occur not too long ago by one of our elected boards that refused to be recorded and uploaded onto the, onto the website. The Board of Health.
Oh, yeah.
So I'd like to know, I'm gonna bring it to the board, I thought maybe we could have a conversation about it, I don't know.
Can I start out?
Yes, you may.
This came about a little bit, a little while before I was chair. Constituents were after me to put all-town meetings on tape and broadcast them. We passed the policy and there was a big pushback from the Board of Health and the Assessors Office. And I can see both sides of it. They both deal with potentially embarrassing things to people. So it's a funny place to have to draw the line or to enforce that who could potentially embarrass, you know, what boards and committees potentially handle embarrassing topics and where do you draw the line? It's a really tough one and it was tough for me. And I think everyone just kinda let it lie, but you know, that's, that's where we are now. I mean, I don't want to broadcast if someone's behind on their taxes, but I understand that we're supposed to have clear and transparent government. It's a tough, it's a tough fence to come down on. So that's where I ended up with it. I, I don't know what the right answer is. I know, you know, I had one person, I'll wrap it up real quick here. You know, I had one person reach out to me a couple of years ago, thought they weren't getting a square sheet from the Board of Health. And it, you know, whether there was credence there or not, I have no idea. The Board of Health isn't my purview. But it's, it's tough when, you know, anyone who's in a public meeting can come in and film, any meeting that's about themselves, I believe you have that legal right to. But are we in the right to broadcast potentially embarrassing things? I don't know. Should we? I mean, by the, by the law and by transparent government and everything else, probably yes, but there's, you have to take the human aspect into it a little bit too.
But see, and I wanna hear what Mike asked.
That's all I got.
I just wanna say that, you know, is it in the public's best interest to know what the Board of Health is discussing? I would argue yes.
I was, as a member, I served in the Board of Health and for a year.
As a member of what?
I was on the Board of Health for a year.
Okay.
And yes, some, some things come up, but I agree 100% all of that. The public has the right to know and that's our job. So I agree 100% that, and I, I can see what you're saying, JR. There are some situations, because Steve reached out to me and he explained his situation. But I says, the bottom line is, it's our job to be transparent, it's our job to let, let the board, so I disagree with, that they, they should not have the right to stop the board from here. So I am in favor.
From filming.
I'm 100% in favor of what you're saying.
Jerry?
Definitely. I mean, I, as, as a consumer, I wanna know what restaurants have mouse feces in their kitchens. And it's embarrassing, but I want to know because I'm a consumer. And I think in transparency and, you know, you need, you need to. And the bottom line is, maybe it will prevent people from, if they're so embarrassed, maybe it'll, maybe it will be a motivating factor that will get them to do what they should do.
So they don't have to appear before the Board of Health.
Exactly. Or anywhere else.
We gotta keep in mind, it might not necessarily be a restaurant, it might be someone who's trying to struggle to stay in their home and working on repairs and the Board of Health is working with them.
Yeah, it could be, it could be many things. It could be many things.
But I think when the public health is at stake, I think it's important that it be done in public.
I'm sure.
Jeff, did you want anything?
No.
Okay, we have, Matt?
Uh, yeah, hi.
Come on up, because I think you have some information on this.
Well, I, Matt Cooper, IT Director for the town. It's worth noting that as far as people's privacy is concerned, anything that's being recorded or reported, be it a health code violation or in arrears on taxes, all of that information is public knowledge. It can be easily acquired with a public records request form. I could call in and say, I would like a list of every restaurant being investigated by, oh, I, sorry, you can say, I would like a list of all the current investigations by the health inspector. And like it or not, those can be, that person can request those records and slap them on the internet for the world to see if they wish. If there's a concern about openly shaming someone, discretion can still be used in a public meeting without having to drag someone over the coals on air. You could simply say, I'll, I don't live in town, but we'll use my address as an example. Instead of saying, you know, Matt Cooper, Matt Cooper's house with a pile of dead animals that's offending the neighbors, you could simply say, that house on the other, you know, the issue in, in Byfield, generally speaking, that we've been working on is now 50% done and we're working with local resources to complete it, hopefully we'll have a new update by next meeting. That still lets everyone watching know, my, my, you know, my Board of Health is actually getting involved and taking care of things that I care about, without saying, Matt Cooper's place at this address. You could very easily address those things without public shaming.
It's discretion.
If someone really wants to know, they can put in a records request, but it doesn't have to be shouted from the mountaintops. And truthfully, if we don't do it, there's nothing stopping someone else from sitting down in the front row of the meeting with a cellphone and doing this the entire time.
Oh yeah, everybody has that right.
And there's nothing anyone can do about it. It's, I checked the open meeting law, there's nothing stopping it.
Right.
No.
And so I think it's in our best interest as an organization to at least work towards that transparency, work towards saying, hey, this is, you know, here's our meeting, this is the stuff we covered, this is what your tax dollars are going towards, be it assessing or health or.
Anything.
Anything, yes, for that matter. But it can be done, it can be done with discretion while still maintaining, you know, a meeting and transparency with the public.
Okay, thank you.
That's it? Thanks.
So now we have, I've been thinking about this and how to handle it and I'm thinking that we send a memo out on behalf of the Select Board to everyone, all the elected boards and committees and all appointed boards and committees to all their chairs.
And attach the.
Attach the policy, do you think, does everybody think that's a good idea?
Highlight, highlight that line that you've.
Did I have highlighted here? Yeah.
Excellent idea.
Sorry, one more thing related to what you just said?
Yes.
Sorry. If they have any questions or problems trying to make that happen, they can absolutely reach out to me, we're more than happy to help.
Okay.
There's lots of different ways to, I was gonna say skin a cat, but that might not work while we're talking Board of Health. There's lots of different ways to get to the, to the desired solution. So if they have a problem coming and getting equipment, we can help them with that. If they got a problem with how to use it, we can help them with that. Whatever their need is, we can help fulfill.
Okay. So can I ask for a motion to allow the Chair to work with Julie to draft a memo to all the boards and committees, reminding them of this policy?
I'll make that motion.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm gonna abstain. I have mixed feelings about it.
Okay. You can abstain. Okay. Town administrators before.
Madam Chairman, most of our time right now is being spent on year-end close. I think I mentioned as of June 30th, our fiscal year ends and we spend probably the better part of the next, the three months afterwards, closing the books, finishing out the year, doing all our financial reporting, providing it all to the Department of Revenue with an eye towards certification of free cash prior to a fall town meeting, should we decide to have one. The only other thing that has come up recently is we received a presentation by Habib and Associates Architects last week relative to the Triton Comprehensive Facilities Assessment. I think some of you were there. It addresses the physical structure, the mechanical, electrical, plumbing, fire protection, sewage disposal, items relative to the Triton campus and it describes all of the current and existing conditions and provides for priority recommendations and budget estimates for future repairs and replacements. So that's something, this was the preliminary report provided to all three communities to get a look at, but there's gonna be significant conversations going forward.
Thank you.
I ask one question real quickly.
Sure.
Has it been, you, you, I know you and the chief were meeting on a regular basis with Deb about COVID things.
Yes.
Is there any, are those meetings still happening once a month or once a week or?
They're happening less frequently, but certainly.
So I'm just saying, I said, I'm just, my question is, do you guys anticipate, because I went to Newbury Port today, today, I had to go in a couple of stores and I needed a mask. Okay, I, so it's happening, masks are happening and again, I didn't know if the town in Newbury had addressed it at all yet.
We're monitoring the progress in the, in the regulations and recommendations very closely as far as the timeframe for any actions will be taken. I can't give you that.
Okay, so, so all I'm asking is, if, if things come up at the meetings, could you just pass them on to us?
Sure.
Oh, of course.
We do that, yeah.
I'm, I'm, I'm just saying, because I, I just got a gut feeling, a lot of stuff's gonna change quickly again. Because my daughter, like I said, she, they shut her down until February again. And that's just, it's, it's, it's mind-boggling what's happening worldwide.
So Chief, I'm gonna go by this, no news is good news?
No news is good news right now. We're monitoring it very closely. Deb and I talk on a regular basis, Tracy and I talk on a regular basis. I expect there'll be some direction that we think's in the best interest of the community that'll be coming very soon.
Thank you.
Yes, Chief. Chief, in the past you gave us, you know, Newbury was gray or whatever, what do we, what's our status right now?
It's still gray right now.
It's still gray, which is good.
It's very good.
It's the best, right?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
The numbers are very, very low, but there's still, you know, we're anticipating that, if you look at the, you know, the big picture of what's happening everywhere, it might fluctuate.
Geez, since I got you on the, on the floor. When we talked today, I mentioned about, we had a tornado warning, we had a hurricane warning. Okay, I'm just saying, could you add me to the list, or you said you couldn't add me to the list of the new committee I'm on?
I, yeah, I don't put you on committees.
Who, who, no, I was put on a committee, emergency management, with Jeff, Jeff's on, you're on it? There's an emergency manager, we voted on it.
I, I'm not aware of any emergency management committee.
We had a, we had a, we, we had the last, maybe making, there's a committee with.
That's the.
Is that the MVP?
Yeah. The vulnerability, municipal vulnerability.
Okay, okay, so that does, that doesn't affect?
No.
No.
Okay, 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 I, I missed, my, my mistake.
One short planning, one.
We'll say this, you know, Mr. Doyle, any information, you know, follow, get on the code red, make sure you're subscribed to that.
I, I get that stuff all the time, yeah, yeah.
We keep it, we keep everything up to date on that.
Thank you, sir.
Welcome.
Thank you.
I'm gonna get back to the Sunset Grill and thank you so much for being, your patience. Julie, did you find anything out?
Recently, the only entertainment license that I defined is from 2020 to 2021, George Porgy. So that's the most recent one. We did have, if you wanna, if you look back at.
What's, what's Georgie Porgy's time?
One to six.
One to six.
Saturdays and Sundays.
Yeah.
Only, only those days?
Yeah, for him.
Yeah. Like, from May to December, but he Saturdays and Sundays, one to six. And those different, you know, he has different, he has musicians, but he has art and different things going on. Back in 2017, the Plum Island Grill had acoustical, non-amplified music, every Sunday from 1:00 to 4:00 and every Friday night from 6:00 to 9:00 and every Thursday night from 6:00 to 9:00.
What was that, 6:00 to 9:00?
Amplified. That's what it said. So it's every Sunday from 1:00 to 4:00 and every Friday and, from Friday, January through April, October through December, from 6:00 to 9:00. And then every Thursday night from 6:00 to 9:00, May. So nine, and this was a few years ago, this was the most common I could find.
Yeah.
But the latest time was nine. Okay, do you want to come up again?
Sure. So, and I'm, I don't think you have anybody else with you anymore.
They, they had to head back to the restaurant.
All right.
It's just me.
The, what do you, they're asking, what are they asking for again?
Yeah, so I, I think the intention would be noon to 9:00, as far as the live music is concerned.
Is it amplified music?
Uh, it would be, it would go through the, yeah, so I guess neither of those are really analogous to our situation. So I, I think probably the closest would be the Comer, but I, apparently there's, I believe someone said it was 7:00 PM there. I mean, we'd really be looking to just be on the level playing field of the, the other restaurants in that area, so.
So do we wanna modify this, the form that we have on file?
Yeah, I'm not sure why it's listed that way, that may have been earlier. But yeah, that, the form on file should, it should be noon to 9:00 PM and then obviously the board would, would have to approve whatever hours find it to be acceptable.
Can we make a motion?
Let me hear your motion.
My motion would be, let's, let's do it from 12:00 to 7:00 now.
So you want, you move to approve the entertainment license, 12:00 to 7:00?
12:00 to 7:00.
Okay.
Okay?
I like that better than 9:00.
Yeah, and like I said, and that gives us.
Hold on, is that a second, JR?
No.
Well, let me finish.
Let me just, all I'm saying is, it gets them going and then if, if they wanna come back to us and add hours, right now, let's give them 7:00. And I agree, after 8:00 on a Saturday night, you know, I don't think I'd want music playing, but you know, right now, let's give them 7:00. 7:00 hours of music's a lot.
Okay, so you want, your motion is to give them the entertainment license from 12:00 to 7:00?
12:00 to 7:00, yes.
Okay. And you're second there, okay. Now we're gonna have a discussion. Jerry?
If I can inquire, is that okay?
12:00 to 7:00 would be acceptable.
Okay. And you are presently open? I haven't been down there.
Yes, they are open, yeah, just not with entertainment yet. So if you remember correctly, we, they needed, we got the liquor license approved, that was way back and then went through ABCC. However, in order to get the entertainment, the occupancy permit needed to be in place, so we were waiting at that. And then, once we got all the boards sign-offs, that's why the entertainment lags a little bit behind the liquor. 12:00 to 7:00 would be acceptable.
To a few people, I know there was no entertainment for Sunday night, but when we went by, I think it was Sunday and a Saturday night, it was very respectable noise level. And it was just, I mean, it was nice to see it used, it was nice to see it crowded and the noise level and the parking didn't seem to be a problem at all.
Yeah, well, I'm sure there'd be.
So, as I said, so.
Okay, so, good, good. Jeff? How do we feel about amplified music?
It's a big area. It's a, it's a large.
Does, have you ever been to the Plum Island Grill? Mike, you go to these, I don't know. Plum Island Grill, do they have amplified music?
I haven't been to the Plum Island Grill for music. I've only been for dinner. But it's like, to my knowledge, I know the Comer has amplified indoors.
There is amplified music.
Yeah, there is, okay, so there is. And I said, but also the night, the advantage these people have is they own the properties around it, okay? And they've given a nice space with fence. I mean, you were right, you, Alicia, you were right about the fence. It's like, it's a good barrier.
Yeah.
Okay, and I think, I think they've done it right. In my, in my humble opinion, I think you've done it right and I think it's, it's, I'm happy, I'm happy to approve that.
Well, I'm sure if this sound is loud, the chief will hear about it. He'll make the phone call and he'll.
Yeah, I believe one of the owners has an infant child who, and he lives like 300 feet away, so they went over and did a baby check on it.
So we have a motion in a second. We've had discussion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you for your patience. Okay.
So I'm clear, so the only thing you're changing on the application is the time?
Yeah.
We're still doing it Monday through Sunday. We're still doing the Monday through Sunday live music?
12:00 to 7:00.
Yep, 12:00 to 7:00.
Okay.
Tracy was done, right?
Tracy's done.
Yep.
So now we're going to review and approve the proposed World War II memorial sign.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? I have some discussion on this. I think the sign is, is great. I see Byfield on here twice, I don't think it needs to be on here twice.
I just took all of the words that were on the memorial and, and it's a replica of what's on the memorial itself.
Is that how you got it?
Yep.
So what's your vision for this, Fred? Like the sign itself, where do you want to put it and?
Well, I have all of the things here that.
Awesome.
Chairman?
Thank you. Yes, Mike?
Could I ask a quick question to Mr. Davis? Maybe I'm totally wrong. I love the fact, Byfield, World War II, 1941, the men and women, if we put Newbury there, would that be offensive?
I took what was on the sign.
No, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, you get Byfield, I agree, Byfield's there, okay, I just say, to include the whole town to?
Well, they have the same thing down in Newbury.
Okay, all right, okay.
For the people in Newbury. And all of the 117 men and women on the, on the, on the memorial were from Byfield.
Okay, okay, okay.
That's a big difference.
All right, okay, that's, all right, answer my question, thank you, sir.
So, how high off the ground do you want this sign, 10 feet? 10 feet in and 10 feet?
It's 10 feet from the road and 10 feet from the walkway.
Okay, and how tall is it? Six feet tall?
Yeah, I think there's a.
No, nine feet tall.
It's not nine feet, the post is nine feet.
Oh, yeah, so the post is nine feet.
Under the ground.
Oh, that's true, it goes under the ground. It'll be six foot high.
I have no problem with that.
Do you think this sign will take away from the memorial itself, Fred?
It's a small, it's a small sign, it's only 40 inches wide. It's set to the, 10 feet to the right of the walkway and 10 feet in. So if somebody's walking by, they can actually read the sign from a distance. But I've had it placed where it's not going to affect the memorial itself.
Okay, so it won't be hiding it?
No, it's 10 feet to the right of the walkway.
That walkway came out beautiful, by the way.
Yeah.
Thank you.
The whole memorial looks nice.
Do you have any issue with us removing one of the Byfields, like from the top? Just have it say World War II Memorial?
See that?
Just get rid of this one here. Just have it say that, World War II Memorial in honor of the men and women of Byfield who served in our country.
Yeah, that's right.
I think that's, that's better.
All right, I like that.
All I did was just take the words that were laid up here, but there was two Byfields here.
Yeah. I think World War II should stay in the memorial.
I think that's right.
Okay. Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, so, I, I guess I'm gonna, Julie, can you read back the motion?
So it was first JR and Jeff approved, moved to approve it, and then I just added in to remove the top Byfield listed on the sign mock-up. Yes, does that work, or do you need to redo the motion?
Why don't you go with this?
Yeah, so I'm going to amend the motion to approve the sign with the word Byfield at the top removed, so that, so that the sign will read, World War II Memorial, 1941 to 1945, in honor of the men and women of Byfield who served our country.
Second.
Second.
How many women are on there, Fred?
There's five women.
Were they nurses?
They weren't all nurses.
Oh, the way I asked that question?
Why?
Because I was doing some research on the Vietnam Wall, and there were eight women on that, and they were nurses. I think, and maybe communications people, but they.
It was actually.
I think they were nurses.
There was three nurses and two non-nurses.
So there's only, how many, out of 58,000?
Eight are women.
Because women served in not combative roles.
Yeah.
And there's five women in World War II, just from Byfield.
Well, there's a total of 117 people from Byfield serving at the time, and the population was under 1,000.
It's amazing.
100% of the people went.
Yep.
I think in Newbury, it was 100% went.
Seven didn't come back, so. And my uncle was one of the seven that didn't come back, so that's kind of important to me.
You've done a nice, excellent job. Thank you.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Fred.
Thank you so much. So we're just going to remove the top Byfield?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Fred.
Thank you.
Thanks, Fred.
Okay, review the mock-up of the recognition plaque for the police station building committee. This one, I actually need to read something here. I had, I had changed some of the language on this, I wanted it to run it by a vote of the board. The, the motion that we had, and it's in the minutes, that we approved for the plaque for the municipal building committee. It said, "In recognition of the dedication and hard work of the municipal building committee consisting of Bob Corners, John Keller, and Eric Spahn." I changed it to, "In recognition of the dedication and commitment," I used the word commitment in place of hard work of the municipal building committee. I don't know if we want to use Robert Corners, his first name.
Bob's good.
Bob's good, okay.
Thanks, Bob.
John Keller and Eric Spahn. So I make a motion that we replace the words "hard work" to "commitment."
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I just think that reads better.
It's nice.
John, what's the width of the bench slat?
Oh, Julie, what did I say, three and a half?
Three and a half.
Three and a half inches.
So, isn't four and a half going to stick out over the slat?
It sure is.
So that's not going to be what we want. Want it to be, because that'll break off when people sit down, so.
I know, it's not what we discussed, but could it go on a, kind of a classy post next to the bench?
Well, how about on the back of the bench? But can you walk past it, is it back, do you walk past the back of the bench?
It would actually be where your back, it'd be, well, I would imagine it's going to be facing the parking lot, because it's all landscape behind it, there's no.
It's best on the facing, but, I mean.
You're going to want it to be three and a quarter as a max.
Yeah. It seems like there's wasted space if that's going to be the representat, I mean, can we make it narrower?
Yeah, there's different, there's different examples of things, like this second one looks like it's a little.
In Newbury, the benches on the waterfront, Newbury would have this all the time, and they, they make it just elongated.
Yep.
So it fits perfectly.
It's got to fit perfectly.
But you can add more words to just make it longer.
Yep.
If you wanted to, I mean, it's like, but it's like.
All right, so we need to find.
You measured the slats, they're three and a half, right?
We're in.
Yeah, there, boy.
So, we need to find, I think we can work, we can approve this tonight, and then I can work with Julie and just find something that will fit on a slack.
Yeah.
Similar to what we have, I like the one on the waterfront.
Yeah, I like those two, those are really well-done.
Question?
Yeah.
There is, there seems to be two different styles here, are we voting on the styles?
I think we're going to vote, no, we're not going to vote on any of these styles, because none of these styles are going to work.
Yeah, that's right.
What I'm suggesting is just get a small, something that'll fit flush to the flat, similar to what's on the waterfront. Do you know what I'm, are you familiar with what I'm talking about?
I'm not, but I can understand.
If we have time, we could always bring the next rendition back.
All right, why don't I do that? I'll find, I'll work with Julie, and we'll get the right one that I'm in my head, what I see, and I'll bring it back.
The seat slats are wider, but that might be disrespectful.
It's like when he, it's like when we, my uncle's got a bench on, I got a picture of it, he wants to see the size of it afterwards. You know, it's a small.
Bless you to whoever just sees. Okay, so, next.
Kind of a motion to put it for the next meeting, is that what you want to do?
No, I think we, we approved the language.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then.
Approve the size.
Yeah, we'll.
Approve the final design at our next meeting?
Yeah. Okay, next we have Newbury Public Access Live Broadcast Issues Discussion. Matt? Please and thank you.
Hey, guys, it's been minutes.
Good report, by the way.
I, it, so it was a lot to unpack, for those playing at home. The report they're looking at is a slightly more fleshed-out and detailed rehash of what was covered at the initial discussion of this topic, so that they all had a chance to kind of go over it with a fine-tooth comb, pick out the parts that are of concern, the parts that I have questions on, and hopefully we'll dig a little bit deeper and see where we go.
Okay, so, I'm going to assume that we all read this report. I'm going to open it up for discussion, who wants to go first?
Jerry? Tell me, can, can, is it be resolved if we just continue to zoom the meetings? Because we're not zooming the meetings anymore, but if we zoom the meetings, because the meetings, if you zoom them, they're in real time. Isn't that basically the issue, doing it in real time?
Real time in and of itself is not the concern. The concern is the connectivity we're using to get from point A to point B.
But zooming, doesn't zooming answer, answer the problem?
Not necessarily, no, because that still is relying on the getting between point A and point B over the internet. In fact, if you were to check, let me see what page it was, you bear with me, I believe it's on page two towards the bottom, you'll see my reasonable approximation of the total trip stuff is taking to go from here to 25 High Road. As the, as the road flies, I think we were talking somewhere in the neighborhood of, what did I say it was, 1,700 miles? Now, granted, internet speed is a heck of a lot faster than regular travel, but that's still a lot between point A and B where something bad could happen. And depending on where Zoom is running, if, going back to the shared bandwidth status of the Comcast service, if that neighborhood happens to be really busy, wherever Zoom is running from, the same hazards still could rear up. It's not a guarantee that Zoom would do anything. It may do it sometimes, it may do it not other times. Case in point, right now, I checked with our program technician, and as of a few minutes ago, everything was fine this time around. Maybe the nicer weather has people going out and doing things, maybe the load on the internet's reduced, who knows? But right now, the older gods of the internet are allowing this to go through without issue. Tomorrow night, maybe a totally different story.
Matt, when, when kids go, when school starts again, does that have a greater, I mean, a lot of kids are doing a lot of stuff online. Excuse my voice, I'm sorry.
Kids going to, the question was.
So, is that, is that affecting, it's like if all of a sudden, we got 100,000.
Yes, but that's not noteworthy.
Okay.
Yes, that's like saying, you know, does B wearing lead weights help me sink to the bottom of the pool? Yeah, but I'll sink to the bottom of the pool anyway.
Well, the other thing I said, and I mentioned it before, I'm still having it in my area where I'll be on conversations and my phone just dies.
I can't speak to that.
I know, but I still say, there's something going on with the amount of transmissions coming out of that building, maybe I'm wrong.
Well, I did note, I believe I noted, let me, I can't remember exactly.
I think you did too. You mentioned it.
I think it was somewhere on page two, I had mentioned
Yeah.
the general increased load on the internet overall. It could be kids going to school, it could be people telecommuting, it could be Netflix got all the greatest shows to binge that week. It doesn't really matter, the point is, internet usage is up.
Yeah.
Unlike a few years ago and several years before that, where, yeah, the internet, it was still the same service, it still had the same hazards, but the volume was a bit, was noticeably down. Which is why we're trying to come up with a way to eliminate the long path between point A and point B.
Have, have you spoken to Comcast? Because I know Comcast has in-house engineers to see if they have a solution to a problem, this problem?
Well, the issue is intermittent, so we can't say that habitually every time we go from point A to point B, there's a problem. And honestly, there's only so much that they could control, because they can't control if some spot along the line is tying up, tying up a routing center. They can't tell me if they're having a data center outage, so Comcast doesn't really have a direct hand in doing something about this.
So the answer to my question is, no, you haven't contacted them?
Not regarding this, no. Not regarding whether they can do something about the signal, let me specify. I have talked to them about what it would take to eliminate that.
Eliminate that what?
Getting between point A and point B.
And I guess, I have a question, on your option number three, you said the details were, were not available at this time?
Let me see, let me go back.
Are they now?
Are we talking about the localized resources? That's to try to move the infrastructure from 25 High Road to 12 Kent.
On page five, you say the, the details necessary for such an estimate are not available at this time.
Ah, no, I'm sorry. Let's clarify that. When I wrote the report, we hadn't heard back from the landlord on the cost for what it would take to move the peg operations here to 12 Kent. We, I did get a cost from Comcast, we're looking, I believe we're looking just about, I think I put in there just about 20 grand.
Forty, nineteen thousand.
Yep, nineteen thousand, three hundred and seventy-four dollars and sixteen cents.
Right.
And that is to move the specialized broadcast cable from 25 High Road to 12 Kent. And then, should we ever move out of here, it would be another 20,000 to move the cable back from, or the service back from 12 Kent to twenty, hopefully 25 High Road, or wherever we end up getting a permanent home. The additional cost would be the amount of space, and I, I heard back out, half a day or a day after I submitted the report, it's going to be about $87,000 added to our, our annual lease for the space necessary to move the peg operations here.
Holy smokes.
And that would be 87,000 to get it in play, and that actually doesn't include work costs, manual stuff to actually prepare the area, or sound, or things like proper soundproofing to make sure outside noises aren't affecting peg broadcasting, including this room and how it broadcasts.
Matt, not to hold you, okay, so the 19,000 is to move it.
That's to move the single cable, yes.
So what is your estimated cost to, to make it work in this building? I know, but how much?
Well, let's see, 87 plus 20, so that's 100, I'd say, let's put.
Just a ballpark.
Depends on how much it would cost us to get labor, whether that, whether we'd have to go out to that. I couldn't say how much it would cost to go out to bid for additional labor, because we don't necessarily have a space to get a quote from them yet.
Okay.
It'd be impossible to get a good faith estimate.
We don't know what we've been on.
Well, yeah, we don't know how much, we don't know how much square footage. They'd have to come in, see the square footage and go, okay, based on X, Y, and Z, it's going to, you know, I'll give you an estimate a day, and they can't do that, so it's really impossible.
I know it's a lot of money, but the bottom line is, we're going to be here for another few years, okay? And I don't think it's worth it. We've got money in the peg account to do this, okay, and do it and get it over with. If we did it five years ago, we wouldn't be having this conversation right now.
Right, but it wouldn't be getting it over with, it would be stalling until we have to do it again.
Right, but you know something? We may, we don't know what's going to happen yet. We may be here, we may be involved, we don't know yet.
Mm-hmm.
But for the next couple of years, we are going to be here.
That may be, and if, and if, and if the will of the board says we're going to do it here, that's fine, we'll do it here. My only concern was, those funds were accumulated, or were gathered from cable subscribers, subscriber fees.
Right.
If all of that money goes away building up 12 Kent, and we need to move somewhere else in a few or several years, we then have to go to the taxpayers?
No, 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 we get 900,000 dollars, we'll have 900,000 dollars, but how much we get now?
We've got about 500.
500, how much comes in a year?
I don't know, I'd have to pull it out.
Hundred?
Around 30, three, six, nine.
It's declining, all right, it's declining, but still.
About 40,000 every quarter.
But still.
No, a little less now. It's less than that now.
All right, but still.
Used to be.
Okay, the money's there, and granted, it's, that's what it's for. And to have two more years of crazy, interrupted, I think is ridiculous.
Okay, so, Mike, hold on, Jerry, you have any more questions?
No.
Can I finish my comments?
I don't.
No, okay, now it's Mike's turn, sorry. You're going, okay, go ahead, Mike, you can finish.
I was, I was finishing my comment when you interrupted me, so I'm just saying, I think it's well-spent money, because we don't know, the last time we were talking about a building on, on Morgan Ave, on the corner, it was, it voted out three times, okay? okay? That's why it took so long to build the police station. But the bottom line is, we may, maybe three years, maybe five years, but we can't go in having no, no, no voice on TV.
Okay.
All right.
Jeff?
Oh my God, it's like, I can't finish my conversation. Where's it gonna go?
It would go somewhere here at 12 Kent. We'd have to get the, we'd have to work out details with the landlord, but it would probably be here on the second floor.
And it would require additional space, I believe?
Yes, it would actually require additional space to get, get the proper broadcast equipment in-house, studio editing, basically, everyone, if people want PEG, we'll do PEG. We'll set up the whole nine yards. It just won't be cheap.
Well, but, but setting up the whole nine yards, that's more expensive. That's, it seems to me you're doing overkill. You're, you're curing the problem, but you're setting up a complete studio.
Well, we're, we're trying to fulfill the desire to use the PEG funds for PEG material so that the community can see government action, see educational stuff, see community content. We've been suffering from being in a holding pattern because we didn't want to spend the subscribers' funds on a temporary solution. That money was being saved up to use at our permanent solution. If they want to put the permanent solution here for several years, that's what it'll cost.
But I guess, I, I think you're putting the cart before the horse. The issue is, how do we cure this problem? And, and now you're saying, we cure the problem, but we cure the problem and we do a whole, you know, PEG studio, et cetera, et cetera. You know, let's, let's focus on curing the problem of the, of the broadcast problem.
Right, nineteen thousand dollars cures the problem, doesn't it?
No, it's still, we still need more space here for the actual equipment. We don't have room for the IT equipment we have now, let alone more.
Okay, so, so...
So we're still gonna need more space.
I would like a motion for the next meeting to give us a ballpark of how much space you need to move it right now, okay? And I don't think we have to put a whole studio together. We got a studio here.
Hold on a sec, Mike, one second.
Can I finish my conversation?
Well, we might want to...
I want to hear from the rest of the board.
We might actually want to put some space here. I don't know if anyone's noticed this, because when sound is working, this meeting room doesn't, actually is subject to outside sounds.
It wasn't, it wasn't intended for it to begin with.
Yes, I mean, unfortunately, if anyone uses the ladies' room during this meeting, everyone watching on the internet and TV is going to hear it. There's no way around that. We can't stop it. It's the way the room is built. It was, again, never intended to do that. So if we're gonna, if we need to do this properly, and we need to, we want to give them quality content, even if we're not shooting for the moon, we're still gonna need to do stuff here at 12 Kent that's going to involve increasing our, our lease amount as well as additional costs to make the space we have in here usable.
So, thank you. Jeff, do you have any questions?
Uh-uh.
I mean, I guess it all boils down to how much we can justify putting the money into other people's property, be it the polls, or this building, or with more space, I imagine we'll be approaching 200,000 a year in rent in this building.
Well, it'll be more than that.
There's a lot, there's a lot to consider here.
So, so the solutions that you have on page four are stay the course and adjust expectations, which means, you know, don't do anything and just let, one option is just not broadcast and just...
Well, I'm not saying not broadcast, I'm saying, right, at no point do we not broadcast. Stay the course literally means we don't exert any additional effort or funds into what's going on. Now, what, that means that, for example, tonight, everything's great. We haven't had any complaints, I don't know whether it's just a fun timing with the day of the week, but we haven't gotten, I don't have any other way to describe it. We haven't heard any negative reports from other committees that have, like, the planning committee is in here on the regular, and we haven't heard anything. Human resource committee has been here on the regular, we haven't heard anything. It's...
And they broadcast?
Planning does. Sorry, human resources doesn't. They, they record with the secondary camera.
Right.
But the planning committee hasn't had any problems, or at least no one's reported it.
Okay.
Again, it's, right now, it's a roll of the dice. When the elder gods of the internet play nice, everything's great.
All right, so I'm not a big fan of not doing anything.
I didn't, well, that was there because it needed to be. I didn't expect there to be a whole lot of support for that option.
Do me nothing is always an option.
Yes.
Now, increasing the bandwidth here, out of here, so that is gonna create a 40% increase in the cost of our internet at both 12 Kentway and 25 High Road.
Actually, I might, I'd like to amend that. I, I've been poking into it to see what we can do. Over at 25 High, which is the sore spot, not 12 Kent, but at 25 High, we're maxed out. I can't get it to go any higher.
Okay, so it's just...
If there was another provider in town that could offer higher speed, maybe, but right now, we got, we got what we got.
Right, I mean, there's nobody else coming to town.
Right. I could increase the internet here, but that wouldn't have a visible beneficial effect, because what's happening is the choke point's happening over there. So I could, I could increase our service here, and that would look nice on paper, but at the end of the day, it wouldn't affect what's happening across town.
So, because I wanted to go that route if it was gonna help us.
Oh, if, I would've gone that route before we even had this meeting, if that was, I would've told you, by the way, I went and upped the bandwidth, we'll see how it goes, but I, I wanted to tell you the, my job is to tell you the truth so you guys can make a decision, not tell you fun stuff that doesn't quite pan out.
Okay, so then the next option here is localized resources. So this would, and that is...
That's kind of, that seems to be where we're putting, where all the, the questions and the numbers and the, you know, how do we want to do this is. And that is ultimately, you know, stop, just basically remove the problem. Stop going from point A to point B and put them all at point A.
Bring it all here, okay. And then the fourth one is this create a townwide network, right?
Yes.
And that's the fiber optic cable.
Yes, and again, that's something at this time I would advise against.
Because it's, we're in rented facilities.
Well, we have at least two operations that are in temper, are in, we'll say, not permanent space. There's town hall, and to my understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the council on aging is sort of in a, they may be there, they may not be there situation.
No, they're in the, they're in the school. They're fine for now. They're in a town-owned building still.
Yeah.
For now, anyways.
That means that, so, so at least one major component is not a permanent home, so, and a, a townwide fiber network is a big, long-term investment. That's something, you'll get, you'll get a payback on it 15, 20 years down the line.
Okay.
Especially for a town this size. But it's sort of, it's sort of, it doesn't work for us if we have to stop five years into the project and say, oh, move everything, you know, and there'll be a massive cost to move that fiber from here to wherever we end up.
All right, well...
And if we move back across town, it might work out to our benefit, because there's less distance between most of the buildings, which would reduce the cost.
Can I have one quick question, Matt? I was, I'm sorry, she's still, just quit.
Yep.
I got a piece of meal today, and I, I thought I had it with me. I'm sorry, I don't. Comcast is increasing to a new speed, a gig, it's now a gigabyte something, and they're offering to customers. Is that something that, that...
I, that's what I looked into previously. Right now, we're at the 300 down, 25 up.
So, so what I'm asking is, is the equipment over in Kent, over in High Road so bad that this, you couldn't use this new?
It's not the equipment. The equipment has, our broadcast equipment has nothing to do with it.
All right, so here's my, my question.
The speed of your internet is regard, whether it's Comcast, or Fios, or Charter, or whomever works in your locale.
Yeah.
Is largely dependent on distance between your site and the central office, which means some folks in town may be very close to the central office, which is somewhere in Newburyport, is my understanding. In which case, they might be able to, they might qualify for the gig speed because they're close enough, whereas someone on, say, the far end of Byfield wouldn't be able to, because the, the cable, at that length, the cable just doesn't deliver that kind of service.
So here's my question. They sent me something to the house today, the gig speed, so it's, it would be the same for High Road. I can see it from my house.
They send that out to everyone. I get that at my house all the time.
So can you just look into it and see if we can get the gig speed, like you're saying?
That's all I'm asking.
Talking in again.
Yeah, that's all I'm asking.
Have them look into it.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing it up.
Thanks. It's in the time to look into it yet today.
So I got, I got, I want to talk a little bit about this fiber optic townwide network, because the lieutenant governor sent an email to, to me, and they're coming up with their community compact grant program again. The town's been lucky, we've taken advantage of several of these grants. We've gotten, I think, our finance policies, we got a grant for that. We got a grant for the small bridge program. And one of these municipal grants is a municipal fiber grant program.
Yes, I've heard of that, too.
So this is new to the CC, the Community Compact Agreement suite of programs, and fiscal year 2022 is a municipal fiber grant program. Authorized as part of the General Government Bond Bill, signed into law by the governor in August of 2020, this competitive matching grant program was created to assist municipalities with the construction of municipal fiber broadband infrastructure and related projects and expenditures.
Wouldn't that hit it right on the head?
How much will they give you?
They expect it to be a matching, I think it's, I think you have to have money, hold on. You have to have the funding, Congress is trying, you know, compact cabinet is a prime example of how, this is the first six years.
Well, one thing that certainly bears more scrutiny.
Yeah.
Oh, yes, that would be, that kind of money would, would be great for the project like this.
This is how it printed, Jerry. Page, page three did, so, but I think it was, I don't, I think we had to come up, we had to have, we had to be fund ready to go. We had to have the funds available, which we do, and we have to have the project ready to go.
Shovel-ready project, is the term.
So, I don't know. My thought is, yeah, and the window is, doesn't open until March 15th to, for the grant program, so we have time to get our ducks in a row.
Excellent.
And if we could get this grant, because we've already won a couple of them.
Already talked about it, yeah.
Yeah.
Can we, can we get a copy of that, one or two, just, thank you.
Um, I think that this is, but I think we also need to solve our town hall problem, so that will be next up on my to-do list.
And either way, that town network, if we could do it mostly with the grant, will still be beneficial, no matter where we are.
I think it's half of it. I think it's half.
Right.
Half the funds, so you have to have, it's a, it's a matching grant program. So if the whole project costs 200,000, if we put up 100, the state will pay another 100.
Nice.
And, and I did see, speak with somebody who was knowledgeable in this area, and they did mention fiber optic would be the best way to solve it.
Yeah, I think if, if we can get this grant, and I think we can get our ducks in a row.
Yeah, dedicated fiber is great. I would love if we could do dedicated fiber. Basically, we would have, as of this conversation, notwithstanding any new developments or improvements in the technology, we'd have potentially 10 gigabit speed across town that no one else but us could use. We wouldn't be fighting with any neighborhood, or any routing center, or anything in my, any of those obstacles that I put in my report would be eliminated entirely. It'd be direct dedicated lines that we could, we wouldn't max out for 20 years. Educated guests, we'd be able to run that, we'd be able to run that stuff, assuming we don't move buildings anytime soon. We could run that cable till I'm collecting a pension.
Yeah, this is something I want to go forward on, try to, try to capitalize on.
Did we have a figure for what that would cost, kind of, if we did it anyway, if, if that was a solution?
No, as of this conversation, we don't. I can read, I happen to have, I have a contact for a vendor who's on the state contract list who does a lot of work with municipalities. I can reach out to them and see if we can get something in the way of an estimate for what it would cost to link several of our town buildings together. I presume that would include police, bull fires, DPW garage.
Library.
Uh, library, town hall, and the senior center. Am I missing any? I think I got them all, most of them, but yes.
I don't know about the school, maybe. We gotta think about the school.
That's right.
No, Newberry Landry.
Okay, okay.
See, yeah, oh, sorry, yeah, we're referring to Newbury Landry, because that's where the, the senior center, the council on aging are currently operating. Something like that would also allow the towns to fail over, like, different sites to fail over. I mean, we are kind of rural here. If all of a sudden the town, if a down tree destroys the internet service at one site, you know, I flip a couple of switches and we go off the other site, and nobody here knows the difference.
Yeah.
Yes.
Just researching the grant, it's up to 250,000, local match of 5% is required.
Oh, that's it.
That's so much, wow, that's a good deal.
Say it again, Drakes.
A good deal.
Up to 250,000 dollar grant, which I don't know if that would be enough, but...
Still helps.
And we only need 5%?
5%.
And we certainly have something that would benefit from that type of stuff, yeah?
I can make a phone call.
You know, it would be nice to get an idea of what it costs anyway.
Yeah, I, I'll, well, I won't do it right this second, but yeah, starting tomorrow, I'll, I'll put my calls out and see what we can find.
Nice.
So why don't we move to table this, or put this on the agenda the next time, so you can put your ducks in a row and we can inquire about this grant?
And if you, and if it's not that quick, you know, we can do it the meeting after.
Oh, well, I can, I can warn every, I can get the word out, I can, I can go through chain of command and make sure that we don't waste anyone's time, anyone's time without no updates.
Oh, yeah.
All right, so I have a motion to put this on the table at the next agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna give us...
Matt, nice report.
You're gonna give us some info on these fiber optics?
I'll get you what I can, you got it.
Thank you, Matt.
Talk to you guys later.
Okay. Correspondence. We've had an email, an email, some mails here on the moving wall. I think we've spoken enough to that, about the volunteers needed for the Vietnam Moving Wall. We got an email from Molly Bettel praising the DPW for their excellent paving work on Bayview Lane. They were, they were there in the heat. They presented a great example of why it is good to live in Newbury.
They did a nice job on Morgan Avenue, too.
Yeah, they do, they do great work.
They do a very good job, yeah.
They're doing an excellent, excellent job.
We got an email from Ann Cataldo thanking the police chief, the town administrator, and town council for their time and effort resolving a parking issue out on the island, so I think that came directly to me, thanking the town. I think that Plum Island parking is just uncomfortable and itchy, and I'm thankful that we have, you know, the leadership has worked on that to a successful outcome. We have a letter from Xfinity regarding changes to services. They are committed to keeping you and our customers informed about changes to the Xfinity XTV series. Accordingly, please note the following changes to the Xfinity services provided in your community that will take effect in August 18th. Our 1795 Xfinity TV Latino service will be renamed Latino Plus and include over 2,000 hours of video on-demand content from Flix Latino and Atrius Player at no additional charge. Latino Plus will no longer be available for new subscriptions, however, customers currently subscribing to the service will continue to receive the service until they make a change or receive further notice. A new Xfinity TV Latino service will be available at $10 a month and will include up to 45 channels, including Discovery, Espanol, ESPN Deportes, Deportes, and Pachones. The monthly fee for a selector will be reduced from $14.99 to $9 per month. Customers will continue to receive all the same channels they have been receiving. The basic Latino package will now include up to 2,000 hours of video on-demand content from Flix Latino and Atrius Player at no additional charge. Customers are receiving notices of these charges in their bill. Let's see, we have an email from Mass Super Beach Cleanup. This is sponsored by Willie's Super Brew Company. They're having a beach cleanup day on Saturday. It's the Massachusetts Super Beach Cleanup 2021. It occurs Saturday, September 18th. Willie's Super Brew would like to organize local volunteers to clean all the beaches in Massachusetts, including our beaches in Newbury. They're hoping to work with all 53 coastal towns, the National Seashore, and Mass Department of Conservation and Recreation to clean over the 300 unique mass beaches. Anyone interested, so each beach will have one group leader who can then bring up to 20 friends and help clean that location from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. Saturday, September 18th. Anyone interested in organizing this can reach out to Alice Gong at Beach Cleanup Manager at 508-264-6264. We also received emails from Kathy, Catherine Lardigan and Nan McKenna regarding the Lykan Bridge project. We received emails from Joan Hoistrat regarding live meeting comments, and we got a letter from the Mass Division of Marine Fisheries back in July, into July about closure, shellfish closures. Any meeting updates? Any meeting updates? I did go to the same, Jeff and I did go to the same meeting that Tracy was speaking to at Triton, to come up with their capital plan. Like she said, there's gonna be a lot more discussions coming up from that. Any review of meeting minutes? Meeting minutes, gonna get a motion to approve the minutes from July 27th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Warrants, do we have warrants? Do you want to design warrants?
Motion made, design warrants.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Executive session, okay. So we have two executive sessions tonight. I have, yeah, do you have, do you have a motion?
I move that the select board enter into executive session in accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Newbury Police Association, whereas discussion of this matter in open session would have a detrimental effect on the board's bargaining position, and the chair so declares it, and to reconvene in open session to vote and approve, and approve the associated agreement.
I'll second that. I have to do a roll call vote. So, Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jay Alkoby?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Jerry Heavey?
Yes.
Alicia Greco?
Yes.
We have another one.
Right, but don't we come out and then...
No, no, we have to move into a dexteric session for the next one, down here.
See you guys in August.
You can go in at the same time, right? Yeah.
Okay. I move that the select board enter into executive session in accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A 3, to discuss strategy with